For pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm not sure there are changes, but just a few clarifications for the board member. We moved a presentation on some of the equity work that we've been doing with the district office move and not having time to review it. We're going to push a meeting or two ahead based on the schedule. And we did yesterday have an executive session at the beginning of the meeting for a manner of personnel, one item and then items regarding litigation. So other than that, the agenda is pretty good.
We need a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion.
All in favor?
I.
Opposed, abstained, motion denied. Now we do a motion to go into executive session for purposes of litigation and personnel. Motion by Sue, second by Brad. Are there any questions? All in favor?
I.
Opposed, abstained, motion denied. And we should only do just a couple of minutes.
And if Dr. Miller, Mr. McGarrett can join us too. Let me repeat. Yes, I'm covering your salary.
Yeah.
Second, motion by Dale, second by Sue, all in favor?
I.
I. Opposed, and motion denied. And we got our presentations. So we'll start with our school safety and reopening.
So Dr. Wheeler, if you'd like to start, then I'll close out.
Sure. Good evening. Today is our second day after our February break. Our most recent positive test report is that a student tested positive on February 26th. So as of today, we have two students across the district that are positive with COVID-19. Catarara County is reporting 91 active cases throughout the county with 14 in our region, which is the southwest quadrant. Those are some of the lowest numbers that we have seen in months. The New York State mandate for masks in schools expires tonight. Specific guidance was promised to be released by 3:00 PM yesterday, but we have not seen that. Once the guidance is released, our opening and safety plan will be adjusted to reflect those most recent changes. Mr. Brightenstein will be speaking more specifically to the practice of wearing masks. But to summarize where we are right now, we will be following the CDC, state and county guidelines, which do not require the wearing of masks on buses or in schools starting tomorrow.
So with that, as kind of a backdrop, as Dr. Wheeler noted, we were expecting guidance by yesterday. As of 3:30 today, and I just did a quick check as of right now, there's still no official guidance from the state education department, but we have been advised by all of the governing bodies that the mask mandate effectively is lifted on March 2nd. We have communicated to our building principals and our administrators that effective tomorrow, masks are an individual choice that the individual student, guest, or employee of the district can exercise with our full support and endorsement to take that into their own hands to make that decision if they want to or do not want to wear a mask. We have stressed with staff that this is an individual decision, that there will be no district mandate at this time, no school-based prospect, Seneca High School, Warrior Academy-based plan for a building to make a mandate or an individual classroom to make that mandate for anyone other than individual in that classroom. So more succinctly, a teacher of fourth grade physical education can't demand that the students in that class wear a mask. So we've made that very clear and we will continue to enforce that. With all of that said, not having the express written guidance from the state education department is something that we just want to put a brief, very small asterisk. All of the statewide organizations have indicated that the mask mandate will be lifted and that any guidance will be relatively non-intrusive and clarified. But until we see it in print, we've kind of been here before with the state with our late directive. So I'm just going to hold us to the simple fact that I want to see it in print and then we may need to adjust and flex. Right now, with regard to the county, there is a carve-out that we've been told that the individual counties and the county health departments can make a directive that would fall under us, under public health law. We have spoken with Dr. Watkins. He has shared with us in writing that it is his intent, barring any major spikes, that the county health department will not issue such a directive compelling school districts to return to a mask mandate. Again, we'll go with what's happening on the ground. But as Dr. Wheeler noted, the evidence strongly suggests that the instances of quarantines and positive diagnoses is dramatically reduced. As soon as the written directive comes out from the state, I would imagine all things being equal, I'll get a ping while we're in this meeting. And so then I'll do a quick scan, but as soon as it comes out, we'll review it. I'll share that information with the board, with our administrative team, and then if there are any issues that we need to resolve, we will do so.
I think that's it. Any questions?
I just wanted to briefly go through the resolutions that we've had for the summer and for February. If you want me to read them in whole or just kind of summarize?
Okay, summarize.
And I'm not sure if some of these are outdated since they were from the summer. We had just wanted a recommendation on superintendent residency and I did submit these resolutions to the board. So we didn't know the process was more from there. We made a recommendation for the district to fund a American home school liaison. And a recommendation for the district to fund additional Native American guidance position with a focus on the remainder of this year's school year. And we did make a recommendation for a Native American suite with your infrastructure improvement. And most recently, we are requesting an IEC meeting time recommendation. So this is based on parent and community input at our last meeting. To request that IEC be moved to a daytime that is less conducive to community participation. Recommendation is third Wednesday of the month at 6:00 PM and to remain at the LDI. We also made a motion to support Native American literacy initiative. We're going to buy the district, the district funds to build a Native American collection in the school library. That's basically supporting the current initiative. That summarizes it very quickly.
You said third Wednesday of the month?
Yes. Third Wednesday of the month at 6:00 PM at your current location.
And what was the last one?
Native American literacy initiative. We just wanted to support that. To build the current block at the library.
Does it take more than two to rule the IEC meeting?
Well, what we'll end up doing, there's a couple of, there's a couple of things that we would want to go back and amend. We can change the meeting dates and times if it's, if it's an isolated issue because of weather or things and we've done that frequently consistently. We would need to eventually go back once we have a solid date and probably amend the IEP because it does specify the second Wednesday of the month or as long as I can remember. And it's fluctuating from four and three to try and find that sweet spot. But eventually, just to be clear, we want to amend the ID. Okay, I'll see if we can do that. Generally speaking, something that quickly, we can set on dates and then bring the IEP forward. Probably at the April meeting, I would say. That wouldn't, in my estimation, preclude us from changing the dates for April, May, June. Yeah, yeah, we also, that's the point, also the executive.
Sure.
Because ultimately, yeah, yeah. Okay. Yeah.
Thank you for your time.
And thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Do you have any other problems? No?
No.
Then we'll move on to central office message.
Um, couple of things. Actually, I feel like I'm reality. First of all, I want to throw out a huge thank you to the building and Brown staff and the IT staff and my staff for making this movement happen. We started on Tuesday morning of last week and we're all moved in and we're back in action. We're just having a little bit of trouble banning some things once in a while because it's a whole new space and everything's been moved and changing some processes and procedures that's here we have stuff and stuff like that. But um, space is great and my only complaint is not my office from the sun. But um, they, Billy's Brown and IT have been amazing at getting us in there and moving stuff and all that. IT is still there, getting, not everybody has gone yet, but we all have a journey anyway. We're moved in, so I just want to shout, a big shout out to those guys. And to my secretary Sue, we're getting my office back in order, otherwise it would still be impossible. And then the second thing I wanted to let you know is that we have finally been approved for all of the American Recovery Plan funds that we applied for. You were awarded between the PERS Act and PRISA and ARP, you were awarded $7.8 million. And I finally got the last $5.6 million approved actually this week. So we're moving forward with a lot of that stuff. Some of it is, is summer work, summer programming, some of it is after-school programming, some of it is covering our current coaches and instructional interventionists, et cetera. And some of it is equipment, as far as technology equipment. We're also looking at replacing the auditory, auditoriums, sound system. We're also looking at replacing the PA and clock system in this building because it's really outdated and awful. And also a lot of professional development for our staff. And includes some of the support workers and includes transportation to the after-school programs as well as the summer program and things like that. So we have several point eight million dollars between what was approved. Early on, it was a PERS Act, it was a year over a year ago already. And then PRISA, which was approved a couple of six months ago or so, and then the whole present thought that was approved this week. Other than that, we are a standstill.
Okay. I got a question though. Did the former tenant, he locate?
Yes. Yeah, he was out before we went in.
That's why he saw advertising this little sign there from?
That thing by the end of the week.
By the end of the week?
The big chair.
The big chair.
Yeah. We're occupying the space and that's there.
I talked to him, I talked to him, I talked to, and asked for.
They allow?
That's why, actually, that's why I'm always putting up the sign up on.
But then we'll move on to Dr. Wheeler.
All right, thank you. Let's see, so I just wanted to provide a brief update on our academic planning and progress to close the achievement gap. And simply the one that we've identified in reading. As Mrs. McGarrett just shared, we received approval for the ARP funding. And embedded within the ARP funding are several things that tie into some of the plans that we have in place and that we have forward. So they're going to allow us to move more quickly through several things that I'll outline right now. One of which is the extended day learning for students who are most at risk for not meeting grade level expectations. That includes after-school snack, instruction, and transportation home. That I believe started, starts on Monday at Prospect and will be phasing in across the district very shortly thereafter. They said in learning, which expand their traditional summer camp learning experiences. This would be required summer school essentially for students who are not meeting the grade level expectations. And that will be starting this summer for students in grade K through seven. We've expanded the focus on high-quality tier-one instruction as opposed to chasing student achievement, which can be somewhat elusive. And we know that measuring growth is more effective than measuring achievement. We're going to continue our focus therefore on high-quality instruction. This benefits all students with an increase in effectiveness and efficiency across the board. You heard a presentation on our intervention services, which are continuing to be a focus with Dr. Simbridge. In addition to our current service providers, we anticipate additional service providers as well as a new approach at the high school that will be taking place in the fall. We've just posted for an individual who's going to be focusing on extended day enrichment offering. Over the next several weeks, we'll be expanding our current instructional enrichment offerings for all students. That's going to actually begin with students who have the greatest needs. We're still evaluating the most effective process for developing and monitoring individual learning and acceleration plans for all students. Funding for that is specifically included in the ARP grant and I would anticipate that you'll have a presentation on that.
So just a quick reminder, we're going to do some after-school. So what if somebody, so what if there was a student that didn't even bring the, the hand so long ago?
Absolutely. So the goal right now is to sort of upscale this. We know that finding the right people is a struggle for us at this point in time because we just don't. We've had a not terrific turnout of staff members who have, you know, wished to be, have to continue on through their day and write additional services after school. The easy answer to that may very well be, well, we'll get somebody else. We'll have mentors or students or other adults coming. The key is that we need to make sure that we're coinciding with the tier-one instruction in the classroom appropriately. Because sometimes when we've learned that if we have somebody come on board who works with students who isn't doing it or following the same processes or instructional methodologies that are in the classroom, we just get more confusion for students. So if the key for us is to be able to upscale this in a timely manner, that doesn't mean that this is going to take us eight, 12, 16 weeks. It just means we're starting with targeting those students right off the bat. And then over the next couple of weeks, it's basically going to be opened up for anyone who goes for additional help. Our goal is to have as many students as possible after school as well as during the summer. There's only so much that we can do during the regular school day. So you have a multi-pronged approach, right? You have, we're going to do a better job of tier-one instruction in the classroom, right? Working on effective instruction strategies. So that makes us more efficient and effective during the school day. But we're also saying we have gaps that are pretty big that we need to close if we want to get on a score at grade level. So we need to actually extend the amount of time we're seeing them. And that is part of the group processes through the ARP grant. So we're not the only ones who are doing this. There's only so much you can get done in a seven and a quarter workday. So we need to extend that time. We're extending that time starting now and then we're extending the school year. And that is, to answer your question in a really long-winded fashion, will be happening within the next three weeks for everybody.
Okay. Is anyone else have questions? All right, thank you. Then let's move on to our board of education members. I want to start with Jess.
I might have lost the words tonight. I don't have a message.
Dale?
I'm good tonight too.
All good. Brad?
Yeah.
I want to say congrats to basketball team. That was kind of the best game I ever witnessed the other night. And I also want to say how excited I am for the students and teachers and all the smiles they're giving us. Hope we're all.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
Just welcome back everybody after a week out. Hopefully get back in the swing of it because there wasn't too much instructional loss and it very, 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 very long week. No, just welcome back everybody and let's keep going.
I also want to say congrats to the basketball team. It was pretty exciting to watch us, like, watch us to be grand though. We were up by, certainly watched it, we were up quite a bit and I hope it doesn't end up coming back and scared us. My heart was beating about 130 beats a minute at least, but the boys pulled it off and it was really a great game. They play again on Friday at 7:45, so if you haven't got your tickets, t-shirts, I encourage everybody to go out and support them. What I thought was awesome was we had a spectator bus of students that went and attended. And it was nice to see all the kids there really cheering and, you know, representing Salamander the way we want to be represented. So I thought it was really awesome. Hopefully we can get more than one spectator bus and good luck for them. That's what I have to say, so I'll turn it over to you, Bob.
A couple of items. I would like to recognize and congratulate God's seed and mine teams. They are on the agenda to head to the state tournament. The student participants in OM are some of our most talented students who give significantly of their time and their talents. And OM has a long and rich history and tradition in the Salamander District. I want to thank all of the students and especially the coaches, particularly Ms. McClure and Mrs. Windus, who have then followed the program as advisors and coaches for many, many years. And we wish them luck. We are also approving as, just because of the timing or the, beyond that, hopefully if that is something that may happen for the national tournament. We also have just an update on our student group going to Washington DC for the infected conference. They have listed the vaccine mandate in DC. They are not requiring proof of vaccination. That is a concern for at least one of our potential participants. So that was something that has been a very positive development. I will say it is a little challenging. Congress is not in session and the members of Congress and our senators are traveling into Washington on that Tuesday. And the kids will be there for the conference and some culminating activities for the class that they've been enrolled in. So we've only got a few lobbying appointments, two of them at this point in time. So we're still eating the bushes to try to get some more for the student groups. But they will have a jam-packed schedule. I want to, and these are two things that I think are really indicative of our students. And I'll start with basketball. The game the other night was outstanding, but I want to tell you something that I was told after the fact by people that were not Salamander residents or fans. And they commented that it was amazing to see so many Salamander individuals in such a positive light. And, you know, we've all heard the legend and the history that, you know, sometimes Salamander has a bad knock. But they came away as officials and spectators telling tales of what an amazing experience it was to play Salamander. And I think our kids and our coaches and fans deserve just an incredible amount of kudos for keeping it focused on the game. From an officiating perspective, officials often get a bad rap. They make one of that call and fans get on the officials. Being an official is a challenging activity for individuals. But they commented to the section and then to me that it was a pleasure officiating in Salamander. And we had supervision, we had fans that were cheering the good plays. And the basketball team came away not just with a win, but a significant win on everything that mattered in terms of sportsmanship and everything. So we will wish them well this Friday at JCC. You do need to get your tickets online. The section is not engaging in point-of-sale tickets, so you need to go online. I believe we have that posted, okay? And then the last piece, which is kind of really cute and you sometimes look through the world as, through the eyes of an adult and, but looking through the eyes, through the, through the eyes of a child, you're doing a different perspective. So on Monday, I happened to be over at Prospect in a number of classes reading for Dr. Seuss Week. And after we finished the two stories, The Name of Pam and One Fish, Two Fish, Three Fish, Blue Fish, I was talking to the kids about the story and who the author was. And they had a whole litany and weeks' worth of activities planned. Monday was the damn day. Today is crazy sock day and of course the kids were super excited to share that information with me. And I mistakenly asked, well, what day is Wednesday? Every hand went up. So imagine 15, you know, first graders, all their hands are up, I can only call one. I picked a one young girl and I said, well, what day is Wednesday? And she said, it's the day we get to stop wearing masks. I thought that the teacher was going to fall out of her chair and the other students clapped. And I think we forget what this pandemic has done to our kids. But yet they're still kind and caring and resilient and have a sense of humor. That pretty much made my day. So I want to thank the students in Prospect as well as all of the guest readers for going into the classrooms and making sure that we're still doing what we can to engage with kids and give them a level of literacy. And I'll end with this, we have a few individuals that are on Zoom who are retiring. When we get to that section, we'll say some kind words about individuals on the call. And we do have plans to bring all of the retirees, I think it's eight at this point. But I want to make sure, and I think I'm leaving someone off, so I don't want to mention their names. They retired a few weeks ago and had made the announcement to separate and retire in June. And we'll have them back in April and we'll properly celebrate and I'm sure we'll update. So with that, I'll turn it back to Mrs. McClure.
Okay. I just have one request. Usually OM will come in and do that, show up like what we did.
Yes. I will talk with Mrs. McClure and ask her about.
All right, does anyone have any questions for that? Yeah, we'll move on to the agenda. The motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion.
Motion by Brad.
Thank you.
Second by Dale. Are there any questions on any items on the agenda?
On the way, that's. I'll save that question for next.
Okay. So we got a motion by Dale, second by Dale, all in favor? I. Opposed, abstained, motion denied. We have no openness or need of this. This is the first surplus and we have, I think.
Years ago.
So we have the items and surplus listed, so we need a motion to declare all those items surplus. Motion by Dale.
Second.
Second by Kerry. Are there any other questions?
Well, you know my question already.
That was actually the one that was on the map. Shane was the last one who retired over a year ago. Actually, almost two years ago.
Actually, almost two years ago now.
You don't realize how many mistakes you make until you go back on a typewriter and try to type something. Feel like you like auto write things. We have a motion by Dale, second by Kerry, all in favor. I oppose abstaining, abstaining Gary. Item D is our proceeds cooperating purchasing. So we need a motion to that agreement. Motion. Motion by Brad. Second. By two. And any questions? This runs from. All in favor, I oppose abstaining motion Gary. And, uh, item C is our proceeds 20, 22, 23, unit cost methodology. So we need a motion to approve that. Motion by two. Second, second by Dale. Are there any questions? And this is just the rate that we get reimbursed by those.
This shows how each, each one of the co-actors is how well assessed the fee for it, whether it's by per student or per school or by his grade or something like that.
So we have a motion by two, second by Dale, all in favor. I oppose abstaining motion Gary. And we is our special education spending school, uh, school year 2022. So we need a motion to approve that. Motion, motion by Kerry.
Second.
Second by Brad. Are there any questions? All in favor, I oppose abstaining motion Gary. Thank you, Bradley. And item E, uh, is our defense and identification for what we see and send it into the rising sign. And this is here. And this is fever. We'll do the first one about that. So we need a motion to approve, uh, the resolution, all motion. Okay. Second by Dale. Are there any questions?
Yeah, go ahead. So, um, this is a matter of, um, uh, dealing with, um, parents of students who have filed an appeal with commissioner, uh, commissioner petition regarding the mask mandate and the January 25th, uh, Nassau count ruling. So, um, this is going to Commissioner Betty Rosa, um, and, uh, this is a board policy action to identify the administrator and the superintendent for implementing both board policy and stated.
So we have a motion by Kerry, second by Dale, all in favor. I oppose abstaining motion Gary. I have to throw the constant petition for the lovely fever. But we also need a motion to approve that. Motion by Kerry.
Second.
Second by Dale, all in favor. I oppose abstaining motion Gary. And then item G is our defense of identification of youth of the court. I'm looking. You want my story? Need a second?
Second.
Second by Dale, all in favor. I oppose abstaining motion Gary. And then item 10 is our personnel consent agenda. It's matched. A lot of, you can't want it. Emotion, uh, is there an emotion? Second by Kerry, all in favor?
I.
I. We got another one. It won't last long.
Yeah.
So we got, okay, motion by two, second by two, all in favor. I oppose abstaining motion Gary. And then our introduction.
So we have, uh, two individuals on the call. Uh, I do not see any appointments on there for an individual participating. Uh, but there are two individuals who are on the Zoom call who are retiring after, uh, an incredibly valuable, um, career in Salamaka. Uh, both are currently housed at Prospect Elementary School and I'm gonna ask, uh, Miss Oaks to jump in here, uh, with anything else to add if she does. Um, and we will have all of our retirees back in April to properly introduce them, uh, highlight their, um, long and distinguished careers. But on our Zoom call tonight is Mrs. Sharon Edwards, a teacher assistant, and this is Barbara Shirella, reading, uh, specialist reading intervention teacher at Prospect. Um, I've known both Sharon and Barb for the entire time that I've been superintendent. And, uh, I will say, uh, this about Barb, who's on the screen right now as a highlight. Thank you, Levi. Barb is, is just an incredibly talented reading specialist. Um, I've seen her with some very challenging kids. I've had the pleasure of observing Barb in her classroom as part of the, you know, process. Every time I've seen Barb, she has a smile on her face. She's genuinely excited to have kids in her class and to be helping them gain in their reading skills. Um, as a member of our reading department, I would say it's no small estimate to say that Barb is, um, a tremendous leader within the department. Uh, she has an incredible command of reading and literacy and phonics and dynamic awareness. And she is an amazing teammate and colleague for her, uh, peers, uh, at Prospect. Barb is going to be a very, uh, difficult, um, reading specialist to replace. And Barb, I just want to personally thank you for always inviting me into your classroom and into the building with such grace and kindness and openness to see the magic that you work, uh, in the classroom with children who struggle with reading. Barb, do you want to say anything?
Yes, I just want to say my years at Prospect have been wonderful. I don't know how many of you know this, but I actually began my teaching career by doing both my methods placement and part of my student teaching at Prospect. And even though I subbed at, um, Seneca and I subbed in Little Valley and I started out my teaching career teaching second grade in Little Valley. My heart has always been at Prospect with the littlest warriors that we have. And I just really hope in my heart that I have inspired a love of learning for them. I know that they have inspired me along the way to be a better teacher. Um, Bob talks about my enthusiasm and I, I remember my first year being observed by Paul Stets in Little Valley and him saying to me, are you always like an actress? And I said, you need to be. When you teach little kids, they, they just emulate everything you do. So if you want them to be excited about learning, you need to be excited about learning. And I've just, I've, that's always, always stuck with me. Just kind of like Bob last year when you came in to observe me and, um, didn't know who I was. You thought I was a first year teacher in kindergarten with my hair up in the top of my head in a ponytail. And, um, I've always loved Dr. Seuss Week. I've watched that grow over the years and I just, I'm so happy that I could guide Mindy this year into kind of taking that over. Um, Mindy Nichols, Mindy Schrader, sorry, she's married now. Um, and I'm a little disappointed that I'm not there this week. I'm still recovering from a pretty extensive foot surgery that I had done a few weeks ago. But I'm really excited to see, Bob, that you're there and other administrators are there just sharing their love of literacy with our kids. So I just want to say thank you. Thank you all for 28 wonderful years in Salamaka.
Thank you, Barb. Our next retiree. Our next retiree is Sharon Edwards as a teacher assistant. Um, I, I will say this about Sharon. Uh, Sharon has been, for the time that I've been here, a beacon and a lamppost. She is, uh, a very strong advocate for children, uh, regardless of their age. And I know that Sharon and I have had a number of conversations where she has helped me see the light on a number of issues where she had much more knowledge than I did. Uh, and it all was in advocacy for children, whether they were upper level high school students that she had at one point in time or her own family or relatives or friends, or the littlest of little ones in the classroom. And to see just this week, the interactions and the kindness just exude from Sharon in helping, um, all of our littlest warriors, as Barb had just said. Um, really is a testament to Barb's character, her heart, her love of Salamaka children. And the importance of, uh, our teacher assistants and helping to make sure that our students are getting the type of education they need. Uh, Sharon, you will absolutely, uh, be difficult to replace because you know everything about everything and you know everyone. And you help us make better decisions. And for that, I am deeply, um, grateful for all of your advocacy and your support for the children. The entire time, uh, you've been at Prospect and, uh.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure Levi that I didn't miss anybody on the Zoom. Uh, and we will get other individuals in here. Uh, we did have, um, a couple of retirements, uh, today and late yesterday. And we'll get that finalized list out to the board tomorrow, uh, and then we'll invite them back in. Sharon, did you want to say something?
Good.
Okay, thank you.
Item B is our budget vote and board member, um, election vote announcement. So we need a motion to approve the election chairperson, the alternate election chairperson, the inspector of elections, uh, and the chief of election inspector and the substitute inspector of. Motion by Kerry. Second, second by Dale. Are there any questions? All in favor?
I.
Oppose abstaining motion Gary. Item E is unpaid admin, um, from a period of February 17, 2022 to February 23 of 2022. We need a motion to approve that unpaid administration. Motion, motion by Kerry. Second, second by two. Are there any questions? All in favor?
I.
Oppose. One opposed abstaining. The advise, yes, one opposed motion Gary. Item 11 is our board information and reports. We have our transportation report and our upcoming events. The ninth, the ninth is still on for, um, the indigenous education.
As of right now, yes, I did email, um, Mrs. Williams and Mrs. Pessini, uh, from the education department. Um, and ask them about their availability to change.
That'll be 12 here in the LDI, um, March 10, the personal and instruction. And then March 13 to 15 is Natus. The Natus County Council, March 15 is our next Board of Education meeting, a more important day of my birthday.
Um, I will be in DC with the kids, so.
Remember you're.
Yes.
I'm taking the night off.
You are? We can still have Kate.
Of course we are.
All right, I'll talk.
What song for the 8:40?
Thank you. For two weeks.
Yep. Put it in the freezer.
And with that, uh, we need a motion to put the executive session for the purpose of, uh, superintendent's judge. Motion. Motion by Kerry, second by two. All in favor?
I.
Oppose abstaining motion Gary. And thank you, everybody, for coming to this. Not for the big reaction.
Thanks, everyone.